Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Garpadian. Here. May I please have your report?
The agenda for the October 3, 2017 Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on Friday, September 29, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What's next?
The item before you is Fire Chief regarding disaster management and preparation. This is a presentation to council.
Thank you. Chief?
Ms. Beer. Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, as you have indicated, Mr. Mayor, your desire to have study sessions at least once a month to delve into some subject matter areas so we can spend a little more time and have an understanding-
Recent wildfires, hurricanes-
...amongst the council as well as the community. This is one of those topics, and I couldn't say that it is beyond appropriate in terms of the timing, unfortunately, for us. As we went through the Latuna Canyon fire most recently, where you were very involved as well, as well as the council and the entire organization, along with other jurisdictions, and all of the disasters, whether man-made or natural, within the United States and elsewhere in the last month, brings us here today as it relates to the city of Glendale and our management and preparedness. And we have the chief who will have a presentation for you, and before we get into the presentation, we do have a short video that we've done so that folks in the community can also be educated about kind of being disaster-ready within the city of Glendale and watch that at their leisure, whether it's on GTV6 or our website, as well as the police chief is here as well if you have any questions once we go through the presentation. So with that, I'd ask the Fire Chief, Greg Fish, to get into the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Beer. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, it is, I echo what Ms. Beer said. It has been a very active disaster season, if you will, with the last couple of hurricanes coming through Florida, Puerto Rico, we've had earthquakes in Mexico City, and then, of course, in Las Vegas, the tragedy that occurred there. So with that, we're going to talk about disasters, how you can be ready for disasters, how we can basically make everybody more ready for that horrible day that may come our way. So with that, we'll start with the video.
Recent wildfires, hurricanes, and earthquakes have been shocking reminders that disasters can strike at any moment. It is our duty as the city of Glendale to provide an efficient, coordinated response to any disaster that could threaten the well-being and health of our residents. Thankfully, the city of Glendale combines proactive measures and an emergency operations plan to save lives and property. Well in advance of an emergency, proactive measures have been put into place to minimize a disaster's potential effects on life and property. We strengthen facilities, abate nearby hazards, and reduce potential damage to both structures and their contents. We also train our personnel in activation and execution should a disaster occur. The Emergency Operations Center, also known as the EOC, is activated as the city's headquarters during times of crisis. Operating under a unified command, critical departments such as police, fire, public works, and water and power gather to share information, coordinate resources, and disseminate updates to the public. When this team is pulled into action, our first priority is the protection of human life. We'll rescue residents, evacuate those in danger, suppress fires, establish first-aid stations, maintain order, and provide provisions. Your city staff will work to keep the lights on, water running, and the roadways open. Of course, with life and property on the line, time is of the essence. That's why we've designed our emergency response procedures to be flexible, responsive, and effective. All Glendale employees, for instance, are always on call for disaster response. We also maintain healthy relations with community organizations, government bodies, and various nonprofits to give our city the necessary edge to fight a crisis at a moment's notice. food and medical support to incidents assigned personnel and meeting the transportation requirements of the incident. In any disaster situation, the city of Glendale is here to protect life and property. Although remember, in a major disaster covering a large geographic area, expect assistance to take days. It is therefore important for you to prepare yourself, your family, your home, and your neighborhood. The big one is coming. Not if, but when. If we all stay ready, we don't have to get ready.
So as Captain Gano so eloquently put, it is definitely not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And so with that, we will go over the following items during this presentation. First of all, we'll define what a disaster is. We'll define what a disaster response is going to look like if we were to have one in the city of Glendale. Emergency Operations Center overview, resource agreements that we have with our local agreements, our state agreements, and the federal agreements that we operate under. Twelve steps to disaster preparedness. This is going to be something that every one of us, you're viewing public and along with those up here, can actually take home and apply and make ourselves more prepared for a disaster. We'll talk about what your police and your fire departments have done specifically in the areas of active shooter and the like, and then also how you can stay informed during a disaster. So let's dive right in. First one, what is a disaster? Essentially, a disaster is anything where our local resources have been tapped out and we're overwhelmed. We can't handle the problem on our own. And those examples would be something like the Latuna fire that we recently had, like a large brush fire, an earthquake, where there's been a massive widespread impact to the infrastructure, heavy storms where there could be a possible debris flow or landslides, and of course, something like what happened in Las Vegas recently, an active shooter type of situation. That is definitely a disaster for the city of Las Vegas and the region. And then, of course, any time when you would have a loss of water or power for an extended period of time. So how do we respond to these things? Well, we have a couple of ways we respond to them. First, we have our first responders, and first responders and police and fire will go out, and they will determine the scope and the impacts of the incidents. We have pre-designated routes for each fire station, and our police officers in their patrol cars will go out into the districts, determine where the problems are, and basically triage, report that information back to their commanders, and then a prioritization of response will come about. So they're going to look at items like critical infrastructure, hospitals, schools, large apartment buildings, bridges and the like. So anything that might cause a problem to transportation or life as we know it in Glendale, we're going to prioritize the response to those areas. Additionally, we're going to request more resources from out of the impacted area. So in the case of a brush fire, we had, in the Latuna fire, we had people from the South Bay and from San Diego responding into our cul-de-sacs to protect our homes during that fire. And then there's an extended response, and the extended response is where we start to activate the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. And additional, we're going to rely heavily on mutual aid from the region, region being the county, state, and from the federal resources like FEMA. Oops. Okay. So the Emergency Operations Center, what is it there for? Well, we activate the Emergency Operations Center when a disaster occurs, and pre-designated trained personnel will staff certain stations, as you saw in the video. And these pre-designated personnel are not just from the city of Glendale, although there are a lot of people from the city of Glendale that are trained in how to operate these stations. We have people from the school district, we have people from Red Cross, the gas company and Salvation Army, to name a few. What it becomes is a central coordination point, and what we do with that coordination is we support the emergency operations in the field. So for instance, if there's a structure that's collapsed and we need heavy equipment to clean or to clear out the structure so that we can see if there's anybody trapped inside the structure, we might call upon the heavy equipment that's available to us from our public works partners. And then the other thing is really important is that's information gathering and dissemination to the public. The public is going to want to know, especially in our information-rich society that we live in, we have to get the information out as fast as we can, and we're going to give you some opportunities between Twitter, Facebook, and our website and the phone number later on. And then, of course, inter-agency and interdepartment coordination, which is critical for the success of the EOC.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can add, as the chief goes to the next slide, as city employees, once you sign on to be a city employee, you sign on to be a disaster worker, basically. So if there is a disaster, personnel would be recalled to come back to work in all departments, depending on the timeframe that we're looking at, and they would become disaster relief workers. Once they have secured their families and their homes, they become disaster relief workers. Now, if folks aren't able to get to the city of Glendale because they live far and there's issues by way of transportation, et cetera, they can go to their local jurisdiction and become disaster relief workers there, and there's a process by which mutual aid becomes agreeable among cities, and folks are able to report to work in that sense as well.
So the five major functions of the EOC are first and foremost, command, overall response management, how are we going to deal with the incident, who's in charge? Second would be operations, and this is directing field personnel to assist the emergency responders. Again, in the case of that collapsed building where you might need some heavy equipment to search for people that might be trapped, we're going to use, our Operations Center would be consisting of our public works section in that case. Planning. We talked about the importance of collecting and distributing vital information used to inform the public. We also use that information to plan for our next operational period. So what does it look like? Is this going to be a long, protracted incident, or is it going to be something that's going to be over within the next maybe 12 hours or 24 hours? Logistics are really critical in these types of incidents as well. We're talking about facilities, evacuation centers, for instance, anything that has to do with services, equipment, food, we have to feed people, we have to give people water sometimes during these evacuation centers, and then, of course, there's just a lot of materials that are involved, moving materials, K rails, stuff like that. Finance and administration is also a critical part of this, and it functions to track incident costs, payment of responders, and of course, the contractors that we will hire. Agreements.
One question before you move on, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Number one, it says overall response management. Does the type of a disaster determines who's in charge?
No, it doesn't.
Or is it a combination of the head of different departments that are trained for it?
Actually, that's a great question. So the type of incident, there's always going to be someone in charge, and it will always be ultimately the city manager that's in charge of the incident. But ultimately, the overall response will determine, the needs of the response will determine who's going to have more impact, right? So if it's a large fire, the fire chief's going to be involved. Evacuations are going to occur, we're going to have the police chief involved. If there's infrastructure that's been damaged, we'll have public works, water and power. So it definitely, it will go a different direction, but ultimately, the command structure's always going to be in place.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
On page five, you said staffed by pre-designated personnel.
Yes.
Let's assume something bad happens, so then the issue becomes some other, from other jurisdictions, they can do the same thing because we don't have enough people to run the operation?
That's correct. Ultimately, the idea is if you're in, if people live in our community and they work in other cities, and they can't get to their city, they're supposed to report to our city. And we have people that maybe live in other communities that can help their community, they will report to their EOCs. It all has to do with how big the incident is and whether there's transportation available. So far, we have not had to face that, but yes, that is the ultimate plan.
Now, I understand that they come and help.
Yes.
But you have an important person running certain things.
Yes.
The other firefighter who lives here is not familiar with our system, let's say. Do we have from outside somebody who will come to, let's say, to do what you are doing, where you are in charge of?
Yes. So in that case, if we could not activate our EOC because we didn't have the proper personnel to do it, we would automatically refer to the DMAC from the county. The county of Los Angeles would be up and running, and they've got redundancies in place. We have redundancies in place, but again, if our redundancies were overwhelmed and we couldn't activate our own EOC, the county would be the EOC that would take over, and we would refer to the county until we can get ours up and running.
Okay. Thank you.
And the other part of it is, we are staffed 24/7 as it relates to police and fire, and so at any given moment, whether it's in the middle of the night or during the day, you're going to have staff here who are trained to open the EOC and to kind of go through each of the steps to make sure that we are in kind of agreement as it relates to opening and getting reimbursed ultimately through a process that the chief will go through as well through FEMA.
So the first agreement that we have is what's called the California Master Mutual Aid, and that is a system where it's basically a neighbor helping a neighbor. So if we have a problem in Glendale, and it's not too big, Burbank and Pasadena will come in and help us out along with LA City and LA County, and even the Forest Service because we're surrounded by all those other agencies. So this was designed back in 1950. We actually got on board in 1953 as a city, and it's, again, it's to combat the effects of disasters. We assist agencies that are not, and we're not expected to deplete our own resources to assist other agencies. We're supposed to have our resources in place so that if we have our own problem during that time period, we can still respond to our own issues. And then, of course, the very important thing about master mutual aid is there's no reimbursement from these governments, agencies, for the first 12 hours. You're on your own, and whatever happens for the first 12 hours, if we release them back to their cities or to their agencies, they go back and there's no money exchanged. We borrowed them, they borrowed us, and all is well. But what happens after the 12th hour? Well, we get into the same call, what's called a California Fire Assistance Agreement, and this is mostly for major wildfires. The CFAA is basically used to activate local government engine and overhead resources for federal and or state fire agency assistance. And again, reimbursement after the 12th hour will occur, should an incident go 13, 14, 15 hours, and we require the services from these master mutual aid resources for that period of time, it goes back to when they first responded. So that's the critical point. We are on the hook to pay these people anything that comes in as overtime, not regular staffing, but as overtime. So if they backfill their stations with overtime firefighters, just like when we go out and we get backfilled, they have to refund us if anything over 12 hours. Is that clear on the CFAA? I want to make sure that's clear. It's a really important agreement that we operate under almost every, not almost, we do every year. We send out strike teams under CFAA, and that's how we get our reimbursement.
Okay, you get, I'm sorry. If you get reimbursement, but the fees will be those who are helping you, let's say, will be the same fees if they need you?
No, it's not necessarily. It has to do with the amount of money that they put into the system. In the CFAA agreement, they have to initially put in how much money they make per hour according to their MOUs, and their MOUs will determine how much money they get refunded. So if someone, like for instance, the city of Santa Monica, if they were to come and help us, their MOU, I can almost guarantee across the board, they're going to be getting more paid than, say, the city of Bakersfield if they were to come and help us. It all has to do with what they get paid in their MOU to make them whole, plus a 10% administration fee. Okay? The last one that we need to talk about is the, what we call an FMAG, or the Fire Management Assistance Grant. We're in the process right now of dealing with an FMAG from the Latuna fire. And basically, what that is, is it's submitted through the state to FEMA to get federal financial assistance so that when we have those big fires, we can get money back. And the beautiful thing about FMAG is they give us 75% of our costs, which is a really important thing, eligible costs. Not everything is eligible, right? But what we're talking, they're not going to refund us if we're putting our own resources on a fire if we were going to just staff them anyway, but anything that has to do with overtime or any resources that we might have incurred damage on. So if we damaged a fire engine or we damaged a utility truck, they would refund us up to 75% of those eligible costs, and that's what FMAG is. So those are the three agreements that we operate under, generally speaking, for disasters.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Does this include other fire companies that come to assist? Does that 75% count?
Yes, it does. Anybody, when an FMAG is applied for by the agency or the jurisdiction that has values at risk, or in our case, in the Latuna Canyon fire, we had the city of Los Angeles, the city of Burbank, and the city of Glendale collectively applied for an FMAG. And so because of that, all the resources that come in, we pay those resources out of our pocket, we get refunded on the backside 75%. So let's talk about 12 steps to disaster preparedness, and this is something that we're going to start pushing out on social media every month. There's 12 steps, one per month in each year. The goal is to get, if you can complete one step each month, by the end of the year, you'll be ready to go for a disaster. It can be kind of daunting to think about all the things you have to do to become disaster-ready, but if we go through it one step at a time, that's the goal. Let's see if we can do this one month at a time. Step number one, create a disaster communication plan. Who are you going to call during a disaster? You've got to choose a predetermined meeting place should your house or the structure that you're in be damaged, and you don't have any opportunity to use your cellphone or a payphone, where would you meet? Where would you meet your family if something were to happen right now? Do you have a pre-designated place to meet them? And then lastly, choose an out-of-state contact to relay information about the family. So if your cellphone is jammed up and you might be able to get to a payphone or a landline, who would you call out of the area where you could coordinate with the rest of the family to say, hey, I'm okay, everybody's okay, we're going to meet at McDonald's on Colorado, something like that? Step two, we need to store enough water for family and pets for at least seven days. And to take that one step further, in your vehicles, you need to have at least bottled water, walking shoes, and some blankets, should you be required to stay in your car for some bad amount of time, right? So what we're saying is, you're on the freeway, it's the 134 freeway, and it's shut down because the bridge has collapsed, and you're stuck up there, you can't do anything, you're going to want to use that water, you're probably going to want to have walking shoes, and you're probably going to want to have some blankets should you need to hunker down in your car for the night. Step three is store enough medications for your family and pets for at least 30 days. So with the idea that should something bad happen, the pharmacies are probably not going to be open to help you out. Buy an adequate first-aid kit, and what an adequate first-aid kit should have is topical skincare, bandages, ACE bandages, cold packs, something that can help you stop the bleeding, right? So compresses, stuff like that. These first-aid kits, they're widely available, you can get them online, you can get them at big box stores. Just have something, and I would also have something in your car as well, not just in your house. Step five, store enough food for your family and for your pets for at least seven days. Self-explanatory. Step six, buy a large container that will contain disaster supplies, and we're going to talk about what disaster supplies you're going to want to put in your kit. On the left, you see a hard trash can that is sealed. You can put that in your backyard, you can put that in your garage, you can put that on your side yard, wherever you want to put it, but what about if you live in an apartment or a condominium? Well, my suggestion is that you use the hard suitcase on the right-hand side, and sure enough, you can get a lot of disaster supplies in there, you can put it up in your carport, parking structure, wherever you might have some type of storage ability, or you can even put it in a closet inside your condominium or your apartment. Step seven, buy a portable radio, flashlight, and batteries for your disaster kit. And keeping in mind that the batteries are something that's perishable, right? You want to make sure that you replace your batteries on a consistent basis. Step eight, place clothing, shoes, sanitation, and hygiene supplies in your disaster kit, just to make sure that should anything go wrong, you at least have the bare minimum to get through the day. Step nine, place tools in your disaster kit, and you can see on the left is a pry bar, on the right is a hammer, we've got some gloves and some eye protection. Really important key point here is that if you don't have an earthquake valve on your gas, that you have the ability to turn the gas off to your house. That's going to help probably save your house should the gas line be broken and a fire break out. So when you get the pry bar, you want to get the pry bar or you want to get some type of natural gas shut off so that, and learn how to shut your gas off. You don't necessarily have to do it, but learn where the valve is and how you can turn it one-quarter turn and shut it off. It's really important. Step 10, place cash and small bills in your disaster kit, and we're saying at least $100. If you could do more, that'd be great, but keep that in your disaster kit so that should the time come where you might need a small amount of money to go do something with, we're not talking about entertainment money, we're talking about survival money right now, and this is going to be very helpful. Step 11, place copies of insurance policies and other important papers in your disaster kit. Again, with the idea that if your house has collapsed or you can't get to your file cabinet or to your safe, at least in your disaster kit, if you can get to that, you have your money, you have your insurance policies, you'll be able to call your insurance company and hopefully get on the road to recovery. And then the last step, annually update your disaster kit and review the plan with your family. So if we started October with step one, by next October, you could be reviewing this with your family, and it would be, you'd be much more resilient in a disaster than you would be today if you didn't do anything. So let's talk about what police and fire have done for preparedness in the last four or five years. It's been, it's been, we've seen a lot more active shooter incidents throughout the United States, and so what we've done is we've prepared by doing active shooter drills with your police and your fire departments. The second thing we've done is we've partaken in command staff monthly drills. The command staffs of your police and your fire departments get together and we talk about unified command during these large incidents. We go over scenarios, we do simulated scenarios, tabletop exercises, how we would handle these things, and how we would get together so that we would operate together. And I will say this, it is very refreshing to see the chief officers and the lieutenants and the captains and the deputy chief get together, and really, there's no egos involved at all. It's just a matter of what is, how are we going to handle these big incidents if they come and when they come? The last thing is, second to the last thing, I have one more thing after the third bullet point, and that is tactical medical training. We've trained our police officers on how to be EMTs. There's a number of police officers that are EMTs that can help us during these disastrous times. And the last thing is, and it's not on here, SPE, Strategic Planning Element. Every month, we get together with our command staffs from the police department, the fire department, and the city manager's office, and we go over critical information, anything that has to do with where that might be, that could contribute to being a disaster within the city, cyber attacks, anything that could possibly threaten the city of Glendale, that's what the strategic planning element is all about. So what can you do? What can you do today? Well, first and foremost, besides the 12 steps that we talked about earlier, you can register your contact information with the city of Glendale for alerts, and that's our Everbridge system. If you go on our website, it's glendaleca.gov, click on the online services link, and then click on the be notified of emergencies link, and it will tell you exactly what you need to do. You can put your number in there, and it will notify you in the case of a disaster. Stay informed during disasters. By far, the best form of up-to-date information during an emergency can be found on social media. The city of Glendale has a Twitter handle of @MyGlendale, and the Glendale Fire Department has a Facebook @GlendaleFireDepartment. has a Facebook, @GlendaleFireDepartment. And of course, the city webpage, glendaleca.gov, has got all kinds of resources. We will take over the City of Glendale's website during an incident, and we will live broadcast what the information is that you will need to know right on our website during that time. If you do not have access to the internet, that's not a problem. If you can get to a phone, you can actually dial the emergency information line at 818-548-3301. And if that doesn't work, if you've got a TV and you can get your TV to work, go to the GTV6 channel, and it will give you broadcast information regarding the emergencies. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I would be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I have a question of staff.
Okay.
A little off-topic but related. So about two years ago, the City of Los Angeles started talking about earthquake retrofitting of their buildings. And they had a great plan and just was never sure as to how they were going to fund it and finance it. I don't know, have they gotten on the way with that? Are they implementing that? If they are, what are our plans of retrofitting anything in Glendale as a way of disaster preparedness?
That's a good question, and I see Phil Anzofim, Director of Community Development, coming up, so he may have some information to share on it. I do remember when that came forward, and I believe you were mayor, Mr. Sananian, and we...
I was, and they had a scientist, I think Lucy Hart, she was giving lectures up and down the county.
Right.
You know, the City of Los Angeles does have a mandatory retrofit for some of their buildings, especially what they called their soft buildings. They're, say it again?
Soft story.
Soft story buildings. After the Silmar earthquake, Glendale revised its building code and our zoning code to then require subterranean parking in multifamily. So we were requiring more stability in, actually in the buildings themselves. We do not have a mandatory program to retrofit, although we do work with anybody that's interested in it. Relatively speaking, we have a small number compared to the City of Los Angeles. We do still have several hundred in the city, buildings in the city. But we work with anybody that wants to do that retrofit, and in fact, there have been 10%, 15% of that original inventory that have taken advantage of that.
Well, given the stock in the City of Los Angeles, to fund this effort, they would need some serious financing. Do we know what their sources are, or, again, I'm not even sure, are they doing it, or...
That I don't know. I can check with the building official and then disseminate that information out.
Right, and the point of the exercise is to find out what sources of financing there may be out there for us to tap into.
We might be able to tap into. Rubik may have some more info as well.
Mr. Mayor, member of city council, as a matter of fact, Assemblymember Audrey Nazarian had a bill that passed. I'm not sure the amount, I believe a million dollars or so, that will help the landlords to finance a part of the cost of retrofitting these soft story buildings.
A million dollars? A million dollars for his district?
For the County of LA or City of LA.
A million dollars, that's, that was enough for half a building?
Well, that's just not the entire fund, but a portion of it.
A zillion.
Yeah, just a portion to help out the landlords.
Okay.
Because at the end of the day, they would be paying for it.
Right.
So this would be some sort of a program that they would be able to tap into maybe and get some amount of funding, but a million dollars would not go a long way.
So right, like a $2 million project, you get a $10,000 grant from the city.
Mr. Ananian, I have a question regarding the retrofitting, the, when we say the City of LA had a program, what kind of buildings are we talking about? Are we talking about the apartment buildings? Or is there a building that was built before a certain date? Because I know that most of the industrial buildings, freestanding industrial brick-and-mortar building, they were retrofitted by '87 or '89, if I'm not mistaken. But what kind of properties are we talking about?
Mr. Mayor, the City of LA actually enacted an ordinance, new ordinance, that mandated retrofitting what they call soft story buildings, where folks can park their cars underneath the building. There is no subterranean parking structure, and the first floor starts above the parking. And these are apartment buildings.
Apartment, yes, mostly. Okay, thank you.
So I have a question. Thank you, Chief, for that report. I think it was right after, it was the first meeting after the brush fires that this came to our attention. We asked you for your report, and since then, obviously, there was a couple earthquakes in Mexico and the hurricanes, and who knows what next. Do you recommend, I guess in light of the risks that an earthquake and a, you know, a strong wind event could present, do you recommend that our residents invest in a generator? Electrical generator?
I would definitely recommend that in the, in the very rare instance when you're not going to have power in the City of Glendale, because we do have a very reliable utility. I can't see how that's going to be a bad thing, right? Just the main thing you want to keep in mind when you're going to operate your own generator is that you never operate it within six feet of any combustible equipment, and you never operate it indoors. So you would always want to make sure it's outside, freely ventilated. But yeah, if you have the opportunity to purchase a generator, that would be outstanding.
And what are your thoughts on, you know, you talked about a communication plan, that when the electricity goes out and your batteries are dead on your cellphones, I think very few people have landlines anymore. They're not obsolete, but I don't have a landline in my house. That used to be a way to communicate because it didn't need the electrical system. What, I mean, what do you recommend? What can we do about that? What are your thoughts on?
So this goes back to, because we're so electronically connected in every way, right? And we have the internet and we Google everything, Google is probably not going to be around, our cellphones are probably not going to be around either. So that's why when we talk about in that one slide, when I touched on, have a plan to meet somewhere with your family, right? So if you're in a council meeting and one of your sons is at school at Occidental, and you know something happened, you've got to meet somewhere. So whatever, wherever that meeting place is, because you're probably not going to have the luxury of just picking up your cellphone and calling him. That's my recommendation. Have a meeting place somewhere central to the city or central to where you live and work, and meet there. And at all costs, you're going to try to get to that meeting place until the electricity's turned back on, the cell sites are working again.
And in describing natural disasters, one of them was a, not natural disaster, what was the name? A disaster. One of the bullet points was an active shooter. How about a riot situation that we saw?
In 1990.
In '94. I mean, everyone said, oh, it can't happen here, but it happened here. '92.
Yeah, '92. It can, and I can tell you this, if we had a civil unrest situation in the City of Glendale like they did in the City of Los Angeles, it would definitely be a disaster. It was a disaster for the City of Los Angeles. I was on an engine company that went into the City of Los Angeles. We fought fire for 24 hours. That was under the CFAA agreement. So again, it's, when the City of Los Angeles is tapped out and they can't handle their own incident, you know you've got a disaster. If we had the same thing here in Glendale, I can guarantee you that the police chief is going to be calling in for resources outside of our area so that we have mutual aid with police and fire. And I don't know if you want to talk anymore about that, Chief.
Sure, we have made some changes. When I first became your police chief, we had trained a group of individual officers who would be available and equipped to respond to civil unrest incidents. Since I have been here, what we've done is we've trained all of our patrol officers because we're not going to be able to rely on a specific number of officers who may need to come from out of the city into the city. So now all patrol officers are equipped, the equipment is now maintained in the police department, so that if we had to respond to a civil unrest situation, either within our city or adjoining cities, all of our patrol personnel are now trained, and the equipment is all staged and ready for them to go so that we can support fire if they need to get to locations to provide medical aid or fire fighting elements, we can do that now. So we are more prepared today than ever, and actually, the Glendale Police Department actually trains other smaller agencies in the region to help us. And in the recent fires, you know, we had Area C, which was one area that went to Burbank, and we put Area D on standby, which is the East San Gabriel Valley. So they would have sent officers to us to help us provide additional resources had we needed it.
Okay. Any more questions? Thank you, Chief. Okay, what's next on our agenda?
Arrangement.
Hold to adjourn. A second.
Okay, we are adjourning this meeting to go back to closed session. Thank you.